Okay, perfect. Well, thank you to everyone that is joining us today. It's truly a pleasure to have you for week three of our virtual town hall. We are absolutely excited today to be joined by Bob Goldberg, the CEO for the National Association of Realtors, and Vince Malta, our 2020 president of the National Association of Realtors. Two very knowledgeable practitioners are going to have a lot of good information to share with you today about what they're seeing up at the national level, what we're doing from a legislative point of view to support our Realtors. And for those of you who don't know, our incoming president, or sorry, our current president is also a very knowledgeable expert on game used baseball bats, probably one of the foremost experts in the world. So we are just blessed to have such wonderful expertise on the call today. And with that, I'd like to kick it over to you, Bob, and Vince, to update us on what you're seeing at the national level.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Vince kick it off. So Vince, you there?
I am. You probably can't see me, but can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you Kurt and team for hosting this virtual meeting. It's great to connect with you, even though through a computer screen. To everyone joining us today, thank you for your ongoing leadership and your resilience during this national emergency. You've truly been incredible. There is no playbook for global pandemics, and all of you have been adapting through the very fluid changes. Today, Bob and I want to go over what your NAR leadership team and the whole organization is doing for its members. From the very onset, we know that you need your association more than ever. And very proud to say that in my over forty years of Realtor Association experience, never seen more done by all of our associations together in creating so much for our members in such little time. So today, Bob and I want to go over what NAR is doing for you on your business service side to get you through this. And I'm going to go over what we're doing in Washington DC on the advocacy side of the organization. So, many of you I know, I've been following regarding what's been going on in relation to the CARES Act and additional funding for SBA loans, which are very important to our members and to our clients. From the onset, we wanted to make sure that we were doing things in Washington that would help us and our members and our clients get through this crisis so that we could be a huge part of the economic recovery on the other end of this. So it's very important that we try to bolster the economy, to keep people employed, to keep people in their properties and their homes. Because what we did learn from the Great Recession was that if people lost their homes, their properties, that it's devastating, not only to them personally, but to the economy as a whole. And their recovery through that just doesn't happen overnight. It takes many, many years. So that was our focus in trying to make sure that we were providing relief also for a group that's never really been included in these packages before. And that is the self-employed and independent contractors. And so that was a very important aspect of what NAR pushed for through these relief packages. And as you see, we were quite successful. Now, in the implementation of the CARES Act in getting SBA loans and unemployment to the self-employed and independent contractors, it's not been an easy transition. The, is, from day one, there was not enough guidance from Congress, but you know, what could go wrong when you'd have one of the largest spending bills ever concocted in less than a month, when these things normally take years? This is, this happens. So we were pushing Congress for guidance, which we got. Then funds dried up, pushed for additional funds, and the Senate passed an additional $310 billion for SBA loans. And there, for the first time, is set asides for small banks, community banks, so that our members and your clients who bank with these lenders will have access to funds under this next program. So, very mindful of that moving forward, and there are a lot of resources to help you that we have to get you through so that you could look at these resources and contact, we'd recommend, your accountant, your lender, if you've not already done so, I hope you're in the queue. And I would ask you to go to nar.realtor/coronavirus. Again, that's nar.realtor/coronavirus. Bob will share with you also a toll-free number that we have that you could utilize, and someone will be able to help you there. Also very important was that people are able to enter into some forbearance agreements with their servicers and lenders because some people aren't able to make their mortgage payments. We've been stressing from the very beginning that they need to contact their servicer or lender. It's not automatic. And we've been working with the federal government in federally backed loans and getting guidance from them and asking them to provide to their servicers, their lenders, a consistent message because we've been getting a lot of calls regarding, "Contact in my lender. They're not offering me up to one year forbearance like I've seen other people getting. What's going on? They said that I need to make payments after ninety days." So, we're working on that. Not all loans are equal. Not all loans are federally backed. We're supporting additional liquidity for servicers. So you understand that if you don't make your payments, the servicer or the lender needs to make the payment to the investor. So we're working on that liquidity issue as well with Treasury and other governmental agencies to make sure that that's funded and stays afloat because that affects the ability for everyone to obtain loans right now. Because they're creating additional overlays, requirements, and getting loans because they're fearful that people may be put on furlough during the loan process and before they can sell these loans off to Fanny and Freddie. So we're working on all of that. We were successful in getting additional time for people that are going through 1031 exchanges and opportunity zones. So you know there are deadlines for those things. We've been able to move those up to July the fifteenth, so those have been very helpful. We're working for e-signature, e-notary in all fifty states so that we can get pending transactions closed, that we can keep our social distancing, get transactions closed for our members. And I have to say, NAR is really proud of all the stories that we're hearing about how our members are utilizing these virtual tools and complying with CDC standards to make sure that our communities are kept safe. And so, again, very proud. And Kurt, I want to thank you and your leadership team in, when NAR and the states and the locals work together, there's nothing we can't accomplish, even this great challenge. So if there's anything we could do at the NAR level, on the advocacy level, please let us know. Now with that, I'd like to introduce Bob Goldberg to you. And I have to tell you, it takes a team, and we are so fortunate, I am fortunate every day to have Bob Goldberg on our team at NAR. So with that, Bob, why don't you tell us, tell them what they're doing in regards to business services and what NAR is providing at this time for members?
Yep, absolutely. And thanks Vince, and welcome to all my friends in Massachusetts. Always a great honor and a privilege to engage with our members directly. As Vince mentioned, you know, we have been very, very active in lots of different areas. As I know Vince covered many of the areas of what we've been doing in our advocacy area. And if you do that, do have a chance, go to nar.realtor/coronavirus, as he mentioned, because you'll see real-time updates and FAQs as to what's going on with the CARES Act, which was stimulus three. As you know, they're going to ratify stimulus 3.5 today. There will be a stimulus four. There's many things in the pipeline. And you'll hear and see a lot many times on the news, or even with our own internal documentation, that you see that we've sent letters to all these different groups in Washington. Please know, it's far more than just letters. Our government affairs team, which I will put against any lobbying organization in the world. They are truly a world-class team. The relationships that they have with members on both sides of the aisle in the House and the Senate, relationships that we have with Treasury, with Secretary Mnuchin and his staff, and the undersecretary with the SBA administrator, the Secretary of Labor, for example, Scalia. I'm on a kitchen cabinet of seven other CEOs and myself, working with the Department of Labor. The point is, your advocacy team at NAR is well-connected in Washington. And we've worked very much in hand with folks like Teresa, your state association CEO, and we work with locals, and we do this all throughout the country, truly is a partnership with a three-way agreement. And, and so just know, it's not NAR trying to do it alone. It's really with the voice of our members, really giving us key input as to what we need to do on behalf of our industry. And certainly representing the largest segment of independent contractors, you'll see a lot of things in the CARES Act that had NAR's fingerprints all over it, such as the pandemic unemployment assistance and things like that. So, and we'll answer any question that you may have on this. The other piece that Vince mentioned is, we took a long, hard look as to what can NAR do to give back to our members in this time of crisis. Clearly, members are being challenged right now. We know sales have been impacted. Showings are way down. I mean, closings are still happening. We're seeing a lot of feedback that there are virtual closings happening. NAR has been on the forefront of pushing with state associations for remote access or remote online notary to be able to get things accomplished. But we wanted to find out, what can we do while members are really going through a trying time? And what can we do to give back and help them during this time? So we created a program called Write Tools Right Now. I will tell you what that's all about. It is a program where we said, "Let's take products that NAR has, services that we provide, webinars, financial wellness, education programs, those education programs that lead to certifications, designations, continuing education, something like E-Pro." And many of you may know what E-Pro is. We're now offering that for free. So many of these products under Write Tools Right Now are at no cost or substantially reduced cost. We decided to forego as much revenue and basically take it down to clearing our warehouse and providing members with all these tools and benefits they can take advantage of and pay very little, and in most cases, nothing. So, to give you an idea, we have over two hundred and sixty products and services and education that NAR has brought to the table and in conjunction with NAR's affiliates. To give you an idea, just in the three-plus weeks that we've announced Write Tools Right Now, we've had over sixty-two thousand members already take advantage of one or more of those products and services and saving them already over seven million dollars in real dollars that are in the pockets of our members in that respect. And so go to nar.realtor/writetoolsrightnow and you'll see those programs and services that are, that are being updated every single day. If you have questions on any of those, Vince mentioned that we have a hotline. Let me give you that number, because you can call this hotline on any, any or subject, product, service, questions on COVID-19, questions on CARES Act, that number, and maybe they can put it in the chat box out there for everybody. But it's 1-800-874-6500. That number again is 1-800-874-6500. And you'll see a full selection. We have all of our staff fully deployed, even in our call centers. Now, of course, they're not working in a centralized call center area, but we have a call center in Omaha, Nebraska, and we have a call center in Chicago, Illinois. And those employees, we have customer support or member support representatives that are there every day, Monday to Friday, to help answer any questions that you have. We also have, if you want text updates on what is going on, you can actually text NAR at COVID-19-30644. COVID-19-30644 to get updated, real-time changes, or things that are being impacted by the CARES Act that we want our members to know about. So take advantage of those, those tools as well. The last thing I'll mention, and then we'll move this forward again with any questions that you have. You know, the leadership team and our senior staff looked at, "What else can we do?" Write Tools Right Now is really important, great services for our members, but what can we do to help impact the lives of our members and their families? You know, there's nothing greater than an association can do that, than to step up and care about the health and welfare of our members. And so we looked at a program that we have a partner already in. We have a program called the Realtors Insurance Marketplace. Has all kinds of insurance programs. And one of our providers is one of the two largest telemedicine providers. And so we looked at it and said, "What can we do to really help impact our members today during a crisis like this?" And if you watch and pay attention to the briefings that are being done by Dr. Fauci or the CDC, the Surgeon General, all of them, Dr. Burks, you see her quite a bit as well, all of them highly suggest that your first line of defense is a telemed program. Versus running to an emergency room or running to your doctor's offices, having the ability to pick up the phone and call somebody if you don't have access to a physician today. Some insurance companies that many of you may have, may already have telemedicine. If you're on Medicare, that also is being covered with a telemed program. But we have still thousands of members that don't have access to either of those. So we put a telemedicine program in place. It's available twenty-four-seven. Over twenty-three hundred board-certified physicians are part of our program. And that allows members and their families free access for two months, once you register. It is a substantial benefit. It is a multi-seven-figure investment that NAR is making on behalf of our members to do this. And I think what I'm also most proud of, and that our leadership team moved so quickly, and to say this is so important, was that we also negotiated with this telemed provider the opportunity that if a member wanted to continue the program beyond the two free months, they could subscribe for just seven dollars a month. That's well over fifty percent what it would cost. And that covers your entire family. It covers kids up to twenty-six years old. Even if they're not living with you, you can put them on the program as well. And again, for half the price, NAR makes no money on this. This is not a, an affinity program where we look at making royalties and all that. We have plowed everything back to get the lowest price for our members that want to take advantage of that. Already over twenty-five thousand members and their families are already being covered in this program. And because the demand was so high, you may have heard that the deadline for enrollment was April fifteenth. Leadership team and, and my team discussed it, and we've extended that now to May thirty-first. So, again, to get more information on that, let me make sure I give you the right place to look at this. It is nar.realtor/telehealth. T-E-L-E-H-E-A-L-T-H. Or there's an eight-hundred number just for telehealth. And that's 1-833-223-3892. I'll give you that number again. 1-833-223-3892. Or again, nar.realtor/telehealth, and you can enroll there if you're interested. Again, you know, this is just an opportunity for NAR to give back to our members during these trying times. We really hope that literally hundreds of thousands of members take advantage of this program. We offered this once before, back in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, when the recession was hitting us. Same kind of idea of Write Tools Right Now. And then over nine hundred thousand members took over fifty million dollars of products. So I'm anticipating that we'll continue to get those same kind of responses to give back to our members as much as we possibly can. And just know that we are more important here to listen to what our members have to say, working side-by-side with all of you to help address the concerns that, that we all have and all the personal anxieties that we're all going through with the horrible pandemic. Just know that you're in our leadership team and in our staff. We talk regularly every week about what new things can we do to help our members. And that will always be in the forefront of everything that we're doing. So Kurt, it's really a higher-level overview from Vince and myself, and we'll be happy to entertain any questions or anything that you still want to know about. We're here to respond to that.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Bob, and thank you Vince, for that incredible information and for all the programs that you've continued to keep available to our members. The Write Tools Right Now campaign is just incredible toolkit. I think it's over two hundred and fifty different programs and services are available to Realtors.
Yeah, and I would just add one thing, Kurt. We're adding to it every single day. We're about to add a lot more new educational programs to that. So we always tell members, when you look at it, let's say, for example, you've already got Commitment to Excellence, which by the way is a great time to take that program, or Financial Wellness Webinars, or E-Pro, or lots of others products. Every week, we add another five to ten new ones to Write Tools so that members can take advantage of more things. So, don't just look at it once. Continually visit there and see the new updates that we keep putting in there.
Yeah, and that's outstanding. All right, so just one quick question for you, and then I'm going to go to some of our member questions that are here as well. For those of you that are watching the webinar today, we do have the questions section. So if you do have a question for either Bob or Vince, please put it in there, and we'll go down through those questions as well. My question was just in terms of what you see on the front. There's been a lot that you've dealt with, especially initially with the COVID-19 challenges that have put a lot of incredible things in place for our members, specifically PUA. As you're looking down in the coming weeks and months, what are some of the, the next things that you see on the horizon that we may be undertaking or maybe on the radar screen for us?
Vince, you will take that first?
Sure. So Kurt, right now, we're looking at various states that are creating their own advisory groups, looking at how they can get things going as we see more orders being lifted. So we're now looking beyond this to make sure that some of our business practices that we've become accustomed to over these last six weeks will probably carry over. You know, for instance, with virtual showings, our clients have been wanting a lot of these tools for a very long time. And we're now seeing a huge uptick in the uploads of virtual showings on MLSs around the country and the increased content. So, we're, we're looking at how we're going to get back online. And if you look at what Lawrence Yun has been saying, is that prices really have not been affected as a whole in the country. And what we're anticipating is sort of like a V. The second quarter is going to be a hit down in the valley and then coming back up in a V in the number of sales in the country without prices being significantly hit. So, that's what we see coming down in relation to the market very shortly. Bob, you want to add?
Yeah, you know, it's an interesting time because, you know, and as Teresa knows, you're CEO in Massachusetts, who by the way does a phenomenal job, I will tell you. We interact regularly with our counterparts and our state associations. You know, every week, we have a call with every state CEO and their staffs and talk about the issues that we're all working on, how do we share with each other? And then, of course, then the light bulb goes off and you say, "Why weren't we doing that before the pandemic?" And so I think with, in all areas, with how our practitioners will continue to sell property, there'll be more in electronic play, remote online notaries are going to continue. There'll be total virtual closings, which they're starting to see more and more now. I think we're going to see a world of hybrid, where video, electronic. To give you a highlight of that, for example, of, you know, just coming up in the next two weeks, we're going to be starting our legislative meetings. It's going to be a hundred percent virtual. The information is going to be out very shortly so that members can register for the virtual convention. We're going to have two big keynote speakers, Rahm Emanuel and Chris Christie, who are going to be in person anyway. They're going to do it on a video. We're going to open that up. And I will tell you, Vince and I both are excited with our leadership team. We'll have tens of thousands of members participating. We'll have bigger audiences for our mid-year legislative meetings than we've ever had. We're even going to have all of our committees start meeting next week. We have an electronic voting system we've already put in place so that when the NAR Board of Directors meet, and our executive committee meets first, and then our Board of Directors, there will be a full voting platform so that we can conduct the business of the association virtually. Many of you may be aware of, we have a treasurer's contested election with two people running, two great candidates. They're going to have a chance to have a video that all of our directors will see. And then our board, first order of business of our board is always an election, and we'll have an electronic voting platform. So I think we're going to start to see a different world where virtual and real-time come together. And that will be the new norm in the world. And so I think it's actually an exciting time. I know we're going through a terrible crisis, and our members worry every single day about putting food on their table, and it's a real concern. But I do think, again, that we're seeing more, a lot of optimism, certainly by economists, certainly by the Treasury. I don't think it's just feel-good world of words. We know there's pent-up demand. There's the lowest interest rates in history. Money will be abundant. There will still be probably a tightening by credit standards that we know that are out there. But I think there's going to be, you know, the problem we had in real estate was that there was a shortage of listings and inventory. There's going to still be a shortage of inventory when we come out of this, and there will be a pent-up demand for people that are still on the sidelines. So that's why many economists do feel somewhat bullish that if we can get through the pandemic, it won't go away. I think that, I think we'd be lying to ourselves. But I think there will be a new norm about what some kind of new normalcy will start to look like. And if that doesn't extend too long, I think that there's encouraging signs here. And we'll keep pushing that way, and Lawrence will keep giving us his best guess. And, you know, we got to keep pushing and do whatever we can to help our members.
Absolutely, Bob. And thank you so much for mentioning that about the mid-year legislative meetings. I was very excited to hear that those were going to continue virtually. And all of that important work that we do in Washington DC, our members will be able to now access and be able to see that important work and the, the speakers that we have in DC. So that's just an incredible opportunity for all of our members.
Kurt, one last close on that part. I just met this morning with my legislative team, and we're actually going to be working on virtual Zoom or other methods of Hill Business. So, now, now, they don't have to take place during the same week as the virtual meetings, but we're working with the respective House and Senate members to say, however they want to communicate, whether it's a town hall like this, or a special meeting that, let's say, the representatives from Massachusetts want to work with, with us and with our, with your state. Let's do, and that can happen anytime, to do a virtual conversation with our representatives and not let that stop just because we're not physically visiting the Hill. So, a lot of excitement about a different way to interface. And I will tell you, the legislators and the regulators and the administration were actually excited when we've been talking to them about, "Here, we still want to engage with you. We've got active members that care about real issues that are very important." And they're like, "Let's find a way to connect us all together and do these kind of things."
Yeah, this is just a great opportunity for all our members to retool, add technology, and really get ready for the new real estate market we're going to be coming back into. I do have a question from Susan. She says, "Is NAR planning a rollout of online new member orientation to satisfy the mandatory requirement, or is the product from Learning Library, what should be developed by each association?"
So Bob, why don't you handle that?
Yeah, I will. The answer is, there's a tool that Learning Library has created, and we put that tool and asked our, that to be done at a local level and continue to develop that. We also have some other new things that we're going to be rolling out as well with a national play on that orientation. So, so keep, keep an eye out. We have that on our, one of our top lists. I do have a question for all of you guys, though. What is, and maybe some of you on the panel might know this, or some of your members. So obviously, as we look at, go ahead to 2021. And the biggest question we all have is, what's membership going to look like now that we're... In Massachusetts, when you go, because we've been tracking a lot of the real estate schools, does Massachusetts require in their licensing, a requirement that that final test has to be done in person? Or can it be done online? We heard the other day, Wisconsin is opening up, I think it's four testing centers for real estate licenses to actually be done now in person with social distancing and all that other stuff. But we know some states have just been on hold. And I don't know what's going on in Massachusetts, but I don't know if you all know off the top of your head where that stands.
Well, we did, and I'll kick it over to you right afterwards, Teresa. Well, we did, and I'll kick it over to you right afterwards, Teresa. We did get permission for instructors to be able to to deliver educational units for people to get licensed or get licensing educations online. I don't know whether the actual licensing can be done. I don't believe so yet. Teresa?
No, we do require an in-person test, and it's facilitated through PSI, and PSI has closed all of their testing centers across the Commonwealth.
Yeah, yeah. And we've seen that in other states as well with PSI as well.
So one of the hopes we have is we know that a lot of our members are struggling right now, but there is, real estate's always been a very important second career or alternative income source for many practitioners. So those that are home right now, if they do have access to online education to start to study for the real estate licensing, that will be one of the data points we're looking for. At the end of the COVID-19 challenges, do we have a new pool of Realtors coming into the marketplace that have used that time to potentially switch careers or to leave their existing careers? And I have a question, whether it's telehealth or telespace health, I believe it's telehealth. One thing that you can do is go to the two websites you want to keep in mind. You want to keep in mind marcovid19.com, which is the state's website, and then nar.realtor/coronavirus, which is NAR's website. All the information that you need for programs are available to our members can definitely be found on those two websites. And I do have a question on pandemic unemployment assistance. We will cover that in the next half hour. So I'm going to hold on your question, but we will cover that. And then the testing in person question. Do we have any other questions from those of you in the audience? If not, and I know, thank you so much, Bob and Vince, for being here with us today. I know that your time is extremely valuable with everything that you're doing on our behalf right now up at the national level. Thank you for the great job. PUA benefits for independent contractors was huge. Telehealth is huge. The access to write tools right now is huge. CX, we're hoping all of our members will do and just continue the wonderful work you're doing. We're looking forward hopefully, a lot of our members participating in the mid-year legislative conference via virtual solutions.
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, Massachusetts.
Words of thoughts?
Thank you so much, Kurt and Teresa and the rest of you all. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us here today. Okay. We have the ability to put everyone else on mute just to make sure we don't have any background noise. Perfect. So for those of you that are still with us, what we're going to cover for the next half an hour is two parts. We're going to talk to you about some of the things that have happened here in Massachusetts more recently, which include the housing bill that came down on Monday, also information on PUA that went live Monday as well. And any questions you have about PUA, PPP, EIDL, EIEIO, or any of the other alphabet suits, we're here to answer your question and demystify. So with that, if I could kick it to you, Justin, just to talk to us a little bit about what you're seeing with the housing bill. And I might have you on mute right now, so bear with me one moment.
Sorry, that was me. I muted myself to unmute. The housing bill that we've talked about the past few weeks is now law. That places a moratorium on evictions and foreclosures. Right now, the two separate deadlines in there, it'll either run for up to 120 days from enactment, which brings us to about mid-August or 45 days from the end of the state of emergency. The governor does have the authority to extend it beyond there, but that's what we're looking at right now. Sort of new news today, earlier this week, the Senate passed the remote notary bill today. The House also engrossed a remote notarization bill. So now it's going to go back and forth between the House and the Senate. Hopefully, they will be able to resolve the small differences they have in their approaches today, and we will see that come out soon and head to the governor's desk.
My excellent. Thank you, Justin. And Teresa, a resident expert on PUA and how you apply, where you apply, and if you're over state lines and all the questions we're getting right now.
Yes, it's it's been, I have to say, a very impressive week across the Commonwealth. Massachusetts opened the PUA application on Monday, April 20th, so just a few days ago. And thank you, one of our members posted in the question box that they applied. They received their approval two days later, and they're supposed to receive their first check within four to seven days. So thank you for sharing your success stories. If you'll share your successes and your challenges with us, that would be exceptionally helpful so that we can advocate for any improvements that need to be made. So having said that, to apply, go to mass.gov backslash PUA, and you'll see the application process there. There are also FAQs. And a lot of the questions that we get are related to, since we are in a central business, can we still apply? The answer is yes. This help and assistance is for people who may have lost income due to COVID-19 and the pandemic, which if you have experienced a downturn in your business, this is what that program is for. We've had a few members ask about, if I have a W-2 job at the same time, can I apply for both? The answer to that is no. You have to choose one or the other. So it's it's probably worth your time. The Department of Unemployment Assistance has virtual town halls daily in both English and Spanish. Participate in one of those. Ask your questions to them directly. Talk to your your financial advisor and figure out which program may be more successful for your personal situation. What other good questions do we get? We had some confusion earlier this week about New Hampshire. I'm going to give a shout out to Johnny, who's taken on New Hampshire law for us as well and researching. So New Hampshire included in their unemployment insurance, independent contractors through their state unemployment insurance. So some joint licensees who are applying, who live in Massachusetts, were applying in New Hampshire, were getting denied. They have not rolled out their PUA program yet. So if you operate in two different states, it just depends upon how that state chooses to roll it out. So Massachusetts, if you live in Mass, if you work in Mass, apply in Mass. In other states, you're going to have to wait to see how they determine their programs. Those are the most of the questions that we've been getting. There, some members have reported that when they do their application, they're asked for 1099s. Some are asked for Schedule C, line 31. Others are asked for no documentation. All of those are okay. This new software system that was set up integrates with some of the other databases across the Commonwealth. So they might have all of the information that that they need in order to process your application. If they don't have it, they're going to ask you for documentation. So just be prepared when you do fill out the application that you want to have those 1099s handy, Schedule C. Another question we get frequently is, if I didn't file my 2019 taxes yet, can I still apply? The answer is yes. You do have to report weekly. So if you have an upcoming closing, it's okay, you can still apply. And then during that week of your reporting, you would report the income from your sale or rental commission. So those are the high-level overview. Thus far, the program has been successful. The Department of Unemployment Assistance has over 850 remote workers set up, running a call center remotely. They are working seven days a week. You will likely get a phone call after you apply just to verify some information, etc. Even if they call on a Saturday or Sunday, it's not a, it's not a, I'm not going to guarantee every call you get isn't a spam, but it's a likely probability that if they're calling from the DUA, they are working on the weekends as well. So
Perfect.
Any questions?
We did have a question from Rachel. Does anyone know if we can apply for pandemic unemployment assistance, PUA, and PPP loans? So the answer is yes, you can. You can apply for both. We're still waiting for any guidance or anything that we hear anecdotally about what's happening with those that do apply for both. PPP is for payroll purposes, which should not conflict with your PUA unless, and here's a huge unless, if you've taken PPP and you used it in a corporation to pay yourself as a employee, then that could potentially impact your eligibility under PUA. But our recommendation to all of our members right now is apply, 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 and then work through the requirements for eligibility. Okay, so next question we have is, will the test for broker's licenses be extended since PSI is closed? So in our understanding is that we are extending all licensing requirements and testing at this point for 90 days after the end of the state of emergency, which should allow you plenty of time. Just wanted to check, 90 or 60?
So it's it's different. So the testing was extended at the last board of registration meeting. Catherine or Justin, do you want to speak to that? Catherine?
I was looking for the unmute button. I couldn't find it. Um, I don't recall off the top of my head, but if you give me a minute, I will search for it and circle back with the correct response.
Perfect. So we'll look that up, make sure we give you the accurate answer, and if not, we'll make sure we get it out on marcovid19.com as well.
Yeah, it's on there also. Yeah, it's on there now.
Okay, and we have a question from Carly. Is there a form we can use for showings indicating use of protective gear? So if this one, I can tell you, we have not specifically created a form. Our belief is very much that brokers should be making the determination as to their business practices and doing this in conjunction with talking to their independent contractors and their clients in terms of how they're going to handle showings and manage liability. Brokers that do have questions about liability exposure should always seek outside counsel as it relates specific to their business model, and I will kick it off to our legal eagles for any additional information pertaining to legal ramifications as well. Nailed it.
Nailed it, Kurt. Well done.
So that's the best thing, the most important thing, because we do get questions a lot from practitioners who are asking, is mar doing this or is mar doing that? The most important thing is that we represent, sorry, we respect the independent ability for our individual business owners in conjunction with their best business practices and their clients to make determinations how to handle these things at that specific level. Okay, and then we've got another question from Sarah. Does the, does this apply to tenants that are that are at will because the lease timeframe has run out? So I believe that that, does that pertain, Sarah, to the housing bill?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a great question.
Yeah, Johnny, you want to take that one?
Sure. So our take is that for tenants who are month-to-month or for any reason, if the the end of the tenancy has been reached because of the end of the lease term, you would not be covered under the eviction portion of the bill. It would only be if you were terminating the tenancy before the end of the lease. However, should the tenant in a situation where the lease term expired, should they basically be close water and stay, you would not have really any means to to move them out unless they fell under an emergency eviction category covered by the bill, which would mean they were they were breaking the law or lease term in a way that was endangering other people.
Excellent. Thank you, Johnny. And a question pertaining to checks. It looks like everyone is getting the minimum paycheck correct. So my understanding is that the checks that are going out do phase out at a specific income level. So other than that, I think it's going to depend on the individuals' specific circumstances as to what amount they're going to receive. Thank you, Joe, for letting us know that you applied and received approval. We are hearing that members are receiving approval on the programs that are out there. So again, we definitely encourage participation. The other thing also is when PPP gets refunded, very important right now for our members, make sure that you have all your documentation together, make sure that you've read through the FAQ so that you know how to apply for the programs with your local lenders, so that when that pipeline opens up again, that you have the ability to get that application in to give yourself the highest probability of being able to receive those funds if you're applying. We have a question from Lillian. What happens with the new bill passed if tenants refuse to pay their rent and yet a landlord can only get deferrals for three months? And will have to pay their mortgage by end of July or August? So again, that is a good question, Lillian. Right now, I think, go ahead.
Yeah, so this is a concern, obviously, and the programs that are set up from the federal government, both the PPP, if you are a non-passive entity, if you have employees and managed properties, and the small business loans are available to pay mortgages and rent. So highly recommend for property owners to take advantage of those tools. And again, quickly, Vince mentioned that the second that it opens back up, we know there'll be another stimulus package, but be ready to apply, get in the queue, and take advantage of some of those programs to help you through this this next few months.
Okay, bear with me. I was looking down through the questions. If you guys see any questions that jump out to you, feel free to grab them as well. Okay.
I just want to thank members for sharing their 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 success thus far with PUA. Thank you. It looks like a lot of people have applied, received approvals. This is fabulous. Thank you.
When I answered, I was only working full-time, and I said, yes, I was denied. So we'll be sure to say that you are now only working part-time. So that's advice from one member that was supplying. Has anyone, this is a question we have heard quite a bit. So this is a good one. Has anyone heard what happens if you are collecting PUA and have a closing, i.e. receive income?
So you will have to report that during your weekly reports. And then if that impacts your eligibility, they'll either make a change to your weekly payments or they won't. And the payments are for 39 weeks in total. And during this period of time, the federal government is doing an extra $600 a week supplement. That ends in July. So keep that in mind. This program is a long program, and you'll have to just report weekly.
We also had a question. Can someone receiving survivor benefits apply for PUA? The most important thing is you're going to have a lot of questions based off of independent individual circumstances, and it's a really good idea to bounce those questions off of the unemployment administration or the other resources to get those answered, because they're likely to vary based off of personal circumstance.
Kurt, there is a question regarding a permit extension act as was done in 2010, 2012. That's something that our team is taking a look at. We've had a good number of conversations about it. And at this point, the legislature is really just trying to get a grasp on what the budget for next year is going to look like before they make those types of decisions. And that is certainly something that is high on our on our list.
Let's look down through. I am just confused about PPP and whether independent contractors on 1099 qualify. I have heard conflicting answers to this. So looking for clarification between PPP and probably PUA.
Johnny, you want to take this one? Johnny made a fantastic chart. NAR also has some infographics explaining all of these programs which are available on our social media and our marcovid19 site as well. But Johnny, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I'll do my best. So independent contractors can apply to both is the the short answer. They are eligible for both programs. The PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program, has it changed, went through a couple of iterations. So when it was highly funded at the start, it was, there was sort of one way it ran, and then it got sort of shrunk down a little bit when funding started to get low. We're waiting to see exactly how it can be implemented with new funding. The only tweak there is that independent contractors were then, there's a portion of the loan that can be 100% forgivable under the Paycheck Protection Program, the PPP. And the portion that independent contractors could get as forgivable shrunk as the rest of that program shrunk. So that remains to be seen as more funding gets put into that program, but at the base level, independent contractors are eligible and can apply for both. But at the base level, independent contractors are eligible and can apply for both the P V P and the P U A.
Excellent. And seeing a lot of questions in terms of different types of income coming in and how they'll impact P U A. Again, for those, we're going to refer you back to unemployment in terms of how your specific circumstances will be impacted. And if you're receiving income during the period, how it may modify or impact your benefits. We do have a question. Do you have to pay back P U A? So typically.
The answer is no. We have a question from John. What if you have rental income? Is P U A still available? Apply. I would apply. You have to share your income, but I would apply and see.
Please, could you please repeat the web address for P U A?
Yes, m a s s dot G O V slash P U A.
Perfect. And we can enter that into the chat box as well for you guys. A lot of questions on how to apply the specifics of P U A. And we do understand, we know that it could be a very complex process. And that's going to vary specifically. How about license renewals? That was a question. Yes, there's a couple of dates that are out there. So for license renewals, you have your real estate licenses, which have been extended. You also have driver's licenses. Those dates have been extended for 60 days as well. So if it's in March, it's now the end of May, and if it was in April, it's the end of July. Also, if you were one of our Realtor Champions and had applied for the Welcome Home License Plate, those dates for picking those up has been extended as well. And then I three favorite, if you need to file your taxes, you now have an extension until July 15. And if you have either a 1031 exchange where you're in the identification period or you're moving funds for the the zone, the Opportunity Zone Program, and it falls within the current period, those dates have been extended to July 15 as well. The question is followed by language warnings about fraud. Thank you, Jason. Yeah, I'm going to mention that. Anything that you're doing right now, I think Teresa said this, be aware that because they're working remotely, they could be hitting you at different times of day or on weekends, which would not be normal practice. Please do verify all sources, whether it's this, whether it's online wire transfers or anything that you're doing, and making sure that you do have the correct party that you're talking to. An extra phone call to verify ounce of prevention is much better than a pound of cure.
And and I'll just echo that. There is a slew of cybercrime happening with all of this new programming and funding coming out and a lot of scams. I'll just share, my brother works for the FBI and we chatted over the weekend, and they are going 24/7 on people calling up, pretending to be the IRS, asking questions. The IRS will not call you. Massachusetts D U A will call you if you apply, but don't give out social security numbers on the phone, et cetera. You know, question and verify is my best advice.
Absolutely. Here's an interesting one. Thank you, Sue. Can we use PPP to make up the difference between the average earnings and your P U A and not have a defect your P U A? Again, interesting question. I'm going to kick that one to our team, but I think that my recommendation is going to be checked with your tax preparer and unemployment, how that would specifically work with your benefits. Can you post the link for unemployment? Thank you. And done that yet?
I did. In the chat box for everyone.
Perfect. A lot of, and thank you for all the questions. You guys are asking a lot of specific questions to P U A that, again, is going to be referring you back to the unemployment website on. Okay, here's an interesting one. This pertains to the housing bill. Thank you, Joe. I have a client who began an eviction in October 2019. We had a court date in January 2020 where we came to a court mediated agreement, which calls for the tenant to vacate on or before August 31, 2020. Does the new housing legislation with a moratorium on evictions affect this agreement?
Well, I would say it's unlikely to, but that is just based on, it'll really come down to how long the eviction moratorium gets extended for. If the moratorium is extended beyond that August 31 date, then I believe it would be impacted. Johnny, any any additional thoughts there?
Yeah, I agree. It all depends on the timing. You know, all the, it's not just evictions themselves. All court dates are extended currently. So if you had a case that was currently pending, those dates would be told as well as the law enforcement is sort of stopped from their portion of it. So if they were, you know, going to be actually forcibly removing someone, they wouldn't be able to right now. But as Justin said, that all depends on the timing. So, yeah.
All right, I'm going to grab this next one because I've heard this a couple of times from practitioners as well. I've seen many agents are selling, asking the children not enter homes for showings. My apologies if this was previously addressed, but what is M A R and N A R's position on fair housing issues? That's pretty clear. Do not discriminate ever under any circumstances, period. So what my recommendation would be, or what I've seen in the field, is many people have limited showings to the buyer agent or co-broker agent and to decision makers. That decision maker may be a child, but I think I would be very careful on limiting access to a property on anything that would even remotely touch 93A and fair housing law. It's just not a slope that our members and practitioners should go down. Anything, if I didn't say that strongly enough, anything else from our legal team?
I think you handled that perfectly, Kurt. I'm going to start forwarding my hotline calls to you.
And we do understand, because we know there's a lot of concern about there about, you know, protecting people, protecting properties, but 93A is cut and dry. That's black and white. Just do not discriminate and don't do practices. Again, talk to your broker if you have questions or concerns, or reach out to the legal hotline if you're thinking of doing something that you think might be questionable. Our brokerage is an LLC. What doc should we use? What file K1 yearly? Again, I would probably talk to your lender in terms of the documents if they're requiring to get specific guidance on what documents they'd like.
Come here. To circle back, Catherine, do you want to update us on the exam extensions?
Yes, I was looking at that, and I I saw specifically that they addressed the extension for the licensee exam to have two years following the lifting of the state of emergency to take the licensee exam. I'm not sure if that applies specifically to the broker's exam as well, or if they touched on that. Typically, you have one year from taking the broker's exam or from completing your broker's course to taking the exam. I'm certainly happy to reach out and follow up with the board to see if the extension applies to that as well. But I would hope that it would be universal to all of that extension.
Thank you. And I'll take this one, which is an interesting question. I know we're right up against 3 o'clock as well, but this is an interesting one. Who would I contact about being able to advertise a virtual open house on MLS using balloons that would feed through to a third-party site that would keep the language that it is virtually, it's a virtual open house?
Can you read that one again?
Yeah, I thought it was an interesting one. So who would I contact about being able to advertise a virtual open house on MLS using balloons that would feed through to a third-party site that would be that would keep the language that this is a virtual open house? So my interpretations are asking, can I put balloons on the side and saying there's an open house? But it really is a virtual open house online.
I would reach out to your MLS for that one. Yeah, I would check with them. I know that down in the Cape and in the Berkshires where they have Flex MLS, there is a whole new addition to the software specifically for virtual open houses and how they're syndicated, et cetera. I do not know for MLS PIN how they manage that process, but we're happy to invite Kathy Condon to join us to answer MLS questions in the future.
Perfect. Okay, and we are right at 3 o'clock. So those, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that Kevin Sears did chime in on the licensing question. So he says during the state of emergency, the clock has stopped and will resume once the state of emergency is lifted for exams and license expirations. Thank you, Kevin.
Very much. Thank you, Kevin. I know we have a lot more questions in here. My apologies that we can't get to all the questions today, but we'll definitely take a look at them and get additional information out. We will be here again for the next three weeks with a one-week break. We have the fantastic Lee Brown coming in to provide some exceptional information on how to retool, get organized, and have some of the great skills that you need to come into the returning market when we come back online. We will have her with us on April 30, May 7, and then May 21 at 2:00 P. M. We will be taking a break the week of May 15, 14th and 15th. And again, this is just an incredible opportunity. There are so many Realtors from around the country and so many Realtors here in Massachusetts that travel each year to the legislative meetings in Washington, D. C. to talk to our legislators and to advocate on your behalf to bring what you need back and to make sure that legislative policy is consistent with Realtor values. So you're going to be able to join us this year because of those virtual options, and I highly recommend that you join us for those meetings. Before I kick off, Teresa, you and your team, any thoughts or anything else we need to share with people today?
Just be safe. Be safe. And and just think about as we start to progress from where we are today and go back to work, if you're thinking about tools or ways that you might start managing your business differently, share that with us because we want to help build the tools and the resources that you're going to need. And as Bob Goldberg mentioned, I think a lot of things are going to be conducted very differently going forward. And so we're here to support you through these changing times. So share your thoughts, concerns, ideas, and let us let us work with you on them.
Thank you so much. And we have posted to the chat section again, the website, which is www.marcovid19.com. Please do go to that website. This recording for this virtual town hall and the ones for the last two weeks are available there. Also, a lot of information on questions you've asked is available as a resource there as well, and the most recent and updated information, we keep adding to it daily. So thank you for joining us today for our virtual town hall meeting. We look forward to seeing you in a week, and please do practice safely out there.